Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're gonna start the meeting a little differently than we usually do. And we usually start with an opening prayer. But before I do, we're going to take a few minutes to recognize the National Day of Prayer. And so I would like to read a proclamation and then have our pastor, who is going to deliver the invocation, Charlie Riddout, from the Word of Life. And after them, we'll call the meeting to order.
Pastor, come up.
Is it working? Yes, okay. Well, thank you pastors for being here this evening. And would you like to introduce yourself before I read the proclamation?
Hi, I'm Pastor Ron Bailey from New Beginnings Church.
Pastor Steve Hammond from Bethel Community Church.
Associate Pastor at Word of Life Church.
That's Charlie. As you know, during our May Day Fair, usually it's tradition to have the National Day of Prayer. And the proclamation was presented at the National Day of Prayer, so we are going to re-present it tonight. Prayer recognizing the National Day of Prayer. Whereas in God we trust is more than a slogan that appears on our currency. It describes an attitude shared by most of those who founded our great nation. Those who trust God pray, and the history of our country have been and continues to be indelibly marked by people who come to God in prayer. While prayer is a deeply personal experience and its expression is shaped by different religious convictions, it is a meaningful part of life for many people. Our greatest leaders have always turned to prayer in times of crisis. And many men and women representing every walk of life pray. The President and the Governors of the United States have set aside a special day of prayer and invite all Californians to pray for our nation and our state. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Mayor and the City Council members of the city of Los Banos do hereby proclaim May 3, 2018 as the National Day of Prayer. In Los Banos and encourage our fellow citizens to humbly join us in prayer, asking that God would give his people wisdom to deliberate between differentiate between what is important and what is not. The courage to make difficult decisions, a willingness to ask for and receive forgiveness, and the strength to meet the challenges that come before us. Pastors, thank you for being here this evening. And Ron Bailey, I'd like to present this to you. And pastors, if you would like a copy, we'd also get one for you also. So thank you so much for being here this evening. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Pastor Riddout, would you like to come forward and lead us in the opening prayer?
Greetings, everyone. If we can bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for another day, for another day of life. Lord, we thank you for this meeting we're having here today. I just ask that you put your hands upon every person in this place, that you guide them, guide their lives, that you protect them, that you protect these officers in this place, that you protect the officers of the city, the firemen, the council members, that you give them wisdom, that you unify in this place, that they're able to run this city, that they're able to implement things that bring abundance to this city. That we can bless this city and enlarge our camps, enlarge our territory, enlarge the things that we need in this city to make it better, to make a better living for our kids and for our families. Touch our hospital, touch our nurses, our doctors, our foremans, our contractors, the business people, the associates, our greeters, our workers of stores, and those that can't work, those that are sick, and those that that need help right now, that are on different types of social securities or other types of problems in their life, they're trying to find a way. Dear Lord, just touch this city, Los Banos, and walk with us and lead us this year in 2018. In the Lord Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of May 16, 2018. And Chief, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Director Maloney.
Faria. Johnson Santos. Lewis. Silveira. Valalta.
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda, item four. Do I have a motion? Okay, let's go to Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Faria.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Silveira, second by Faria, to approve the agenda stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None, carry on. Okay, let's go on to item five, presentations, Habitat for Humanity Certificate of Recognition. Habitat members, could you come forward? All of you who are here tonight? Well, as you can see, we have seven members here from the Habitat for Los Banos community who over the years have given shelter to many individuals in the form of rehab houses or brand-new homes. And we have Ashley Williams tonight, you are the spokesperson tonight, aren't you? Okay, we don't want to let Neil do it. Okay.
He'd probably like to.
All right.
Thank you for having us. Yes, Habitat for Humanity is a housing organization that brings hope to communities and to people that may not otherwise be able to find housing. So our efforts are across the West Side. And here in Los Banos, we've done nearly 20 new homeowners and worked on several rehab projects for new roofs and other critical home repairs. Our mission is really around the idea that we believe everyone should be entitled to a decent place to live. And our efforts are around ending poverty housing. So we do that through the support of the community. Our work is done through volunteers, and we welcome people anytime. We're working right now on M Street, just finished one house and are finishing another house. All are welcome to come out, and we just really want to thank the community for their support through donations, through just advocacy and support around ending poverty housing. So... Does our president want to say anything?
No.
Certainly, if you insist. Don't get that clock going, okay?
Pardon me?
Don't get that clock going.
Remember, there's only a certain battery life.
I do want to thank everybody that has participated in ironics, especially thank the board here. We have a spectacular board of directors, we have Vernicki, Ed, Neil, Jen, and Gary. It's just a wonderful group of people. We just had our Women Build, which was spectacular. We want to thank the city for all their support. It makes such a difference, not only do we build safe, affordable, decent housing, we are building community. People that come out and help us, you could just see them grow, especially younger people. We give them references, they become more employable. It's just a wonderful, wonderful program to get involved. So I encourage you to come out and join us. Usually it's Friday and Saturday for sure. Saturday, Saturday for sure. But if you need any information, you can call Habitat. If anybody has a safe, affordable, decent, cheap building available for rent for the Habitat Restore, please let us know because that's one of our main fundraisers, and we've been in close since the 31st. And not only does that make a difference with raising funds, we do so many brush with kindness in the community to help people out that don't have necessary information. So again, I appreciate your support and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Sandy. Do you want to tell them about your Buy a Stud program? It's not a sexist remark either.
So when we do build homes, we offer the opportunity to buy a stud. And basically, you finance one stud, and there's about, I don't know, 300 or so in a house. And you can sign your stud, you can send a message on the stud with a prayer or just encouragement for that family. And those studs go up in the house and they stay with that family forever. So it's just a really neat way to show support and, you know, be able to donate. We, there are several other ways of getting involved. The Women Build is a national event, but we had over 50 women volunteers out here this last week. And Women Build is an event kind of designed to put the focus on those that are affected most by poverty housing, which are women and children. And so that's why it led up to Mother's Day, which, you know, we celebrate our moms. So there are lots of ways of getting involved, and the stud is just a fun one that we used in the community. So we also will be having a fireworks booth, so if anyone wants to come out to Target, we'll be doing that there, so.
Well, thank you so much. And anyone who wishes to donate or participate, they can always use the help. And if you'd like to learn how to build a house, they will teach you. And so it's, how many houses have you built so far in the community since Habitat started? Or built or remodeled?
Built or rehabbed in terms of new homeowners, about 18. And we've done many, many other critical home repairs. So new roofs, new plumbing, new electrical type stuff.
So it's not just a full build, it's helping someone out who just needs partial help on their own home?
Right. So we want to enable, we want to be able to help preserve the housing stock that is there with low-income families. So these are homeowners who we come in and do critical home repairs.
Well, thank you so much for all that you do. There are many more members that in the past that are not here this evening that have donated their time and effort, but these seven people came here tonight to give of their time, and we really appreciate what you do. So with that, I'd like to read the certificate, a certificate of recognition presented to Habitat for Humanity, Westside, Merced County. In appreciation of your volunteer efforts in providing affordable, quality housing to potential home buyers within our community. And again, thank you so much. So Sean Baird, could you come forward? Sean is going to introduce all the officers that are here this evening for the proclamation recognizing National Police Week. Sean, can you tell us a little bit about the history of it?
Yes. So 1962, President Kennedy formed Police Week, which was on May 15, Police Memorial Day. That turned into Police Week, which spanned this week. If I could, if I could have everybody from the police department come down. So Mayor, right now, the Police Week is, it's in Washington, DC. It actually, in 1973, I believe, was the first year that officers throughout the country would go there, want to honor the fallen. And it has grown into today, I believe, between 25 and 40,000 law enforcement officers go there. On the behalf of the men and women of Los Banos Police Department, I'd like to thank the city for this special recognition, the council, city manager, for your support in helping us serve the citizens of Los Banos. Thank you.
Can I read, want me to read this? Okay. Proclamation recognizing National Police Week. Whereas the President of the United States and Congress have designated May 15, 2018 as Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 13 through May 19 as National Police Week. National Police Week is observed in honor and service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. The police officers of the city of Los Banos Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of Los Banos. And just remember that, the rights and freedoms of everyone. Without law enforcement, just imagine what this country would be like. And right now, law enforcement is not too popular in the eyes of some who don't think that we need it. God forbid that that ever happens where that group takes over. The police officers of the city of Los Banos Police Department play an essential role, again, in safeguarding the freedoms. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of our police department. And that the police officers of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. The men and women of the Los Banos Police Department increasingly provide a vital public service. And therefore, the Mayor and the City Council members of the city of Los Banos call upon all citizens of the city of Los Banos to observe the week of May 13 through May 19 as National Police Week, in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so have established for themselves an enduring reputation for preserving the rights and the security of all citizens. Be it further proclaimed, that we call upon the citizens of the city of Los Banos to observe May 15, 2018 as Police Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, who have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to those survivors and our fallen heroes. The public may not know this, but we had two officers who were killed in the line of duty in the 1940s, 50? Yeah. They were in the 1940s. And thank God, just thank God, we have not had anyone perish. We've had two recently that were severely hurt. They are recovering, and please pray for them, because their brothers and sisters in front of you will take care of them. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say again, thank you very much. Okay, let's go on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council member on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. And I would ask you, if you have cellphones, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
And I'm here to speak in opposition to this Boys and Girls Club of Merced agreement that the City Council will be considering today. I've reviewed the staff reports and the agreement between the city and the Boys Club of Merced, and I have some serious concerns. The city is giving these Boys and Girls Club the classrooms, the gym, the game center at the community center, which, according to the fees that are represented by the park recreation, an in-kind but not charged, approximately $168,000 over the next eight weeks that they are in the community center. In addition, the city is going to provide for this calendar year. In addition, the city is going to provide for this calendar year, twelve thousand five hundred dollars to the Boys and Girls Club. Now, if this program is considered to be successful, and by whomever, and by whatever those guidelines are, which are not spelled out in the agreement, um, the Boys Club can continue their agreement through the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. If that's the case, how much more money was it going to cost the City of Los Banos to keep the Boys and Girls Club here in Los Banos? The summer program of the Boys and Girls Club will be, are for those kids between the ages of five and fourteen. It's five days a week, seven AM to seven PM, or, I'm sorry, seven AM to six PM. It's eleven hours a day. It sounds more like to me like a babysitting facility, uh, instead of being a youth prevention, juvenile prevention program. According to the youth facility agreement, uh, the Boys and Girls Club is only carrying one million dollars of, um, general liability and two million dollars of aggregate, which is below the industry standard. And I speak from a lot of experience, I've been dealing with PALS programs, directors, um, across the country. So in other words, if ten kids get hurt in their program, there's only two million dollars to pay for any of the hospital fees and doctor fees, we all know how that escalates very quickly. The Boys and Girls Club budget doesn't really show all the income and expenses from, uh, the food costs, because I know that the, uh, Boys and Girls Club can qualify for the FDA, uh, not the FDA, the, yeah, the United, what is it called? USDA Food and Enrichment Program, um, which means they could bring in another twenty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, according to my calculations, the figures that were presented in this agreement that's presented to this city council. And the other problem that I have is I don't, I can't recall when this city council is provided twelve thousand five hundred dollars plus all the in-kind fees of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to any other nonprofit organizations in town. If they want to use the community center, they're charged. The one thing that, that I don't think was considered, um, was partnering with already existing programs, youth programs in town, that being of the Los Banos PAL program in particular, because I'm very familiar with it, uh, who has been in this town for thirty years and probably has serviced in excess of about forty thousand kids. My question is, did the recreation program and PAL, were they a possibility to work out a partnership? I don't think that was ever considered. If it was, then it's, I had no knowledge of it. And what about any other youth organization and a partnership to provide programs for the ki- kids of Los Banos? Again, I have a real issue with the city and the city council approving, uh, a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club to use a twelve million dollar facility that was paid for by the taxpayers for these eight weeks, and if it's successful, supposedly, there'd be, it can be continued. So I strongly encourage the city council reconsider getting into this agreement, um, with the Boys and Girls Club of Merced before they do some more research into this full agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Okay, good evening.
First, I'd like to say, I'm talk, I'm speaking to you this evening, is Mark Marshall, a citizen of Los Banos and a homeowner in Los Banos. You know, I'm not the proud superintendent, so I'm going to just make that distinction. But I want to talk to you tonight about Measure X, and that's a ballot measure that will be on the ballot on June fifth, to, to improve the school district. And there are basically three components that, you know, that it hits upon. First, relieving severe overcrowding. Next, improving school safety. And then upgrading and replacing, you know, things that are, that need work at, um, current facilities. The thing that, the myth that I want to clarify is that it's not a new tax, it's basically an extension of a current bond. And if implemented, it could do a lot of great good for our community. One thing that I want to add is that when people look, move into an area, and this is a growing city, one of the first things that they always ask is, what's the quality of the schools? And a measure of this magnitude would do a great, you know, a great good for our city. So I wanted to just basically, you know, share more information about that. There are some handouts in the back, and urge everyone to vote on June fifth. Again, I'm not speaking to you as a superintendent, I'm speaking to you as a homeowner and a proud citizen of Los Banos. So, thank you.
You're welcome to come back as a superintendent anytime, though. Okay?
And I'd like to back up what Mark Marshall had to say about Measure X. I don't have children, uh, school-aged children here, my children are grown, I'm a grandmother. I am a Realtor, and the question, the, the things that he mentioned about what people coming into our community care about, that's really very important. And I know everybody in here, people who live in Los Banos love Los Banos. You can't have a great community without great schools. I've heard that school kids here think Los Banos is flat, because the kids leave and they never come back. We need to provide them better opportunities, and a crowded classroom isn't where that is. As Mark said, no increase in taxes. So you can help your community better, educate our girls and boys. They represent Los Banos wherever they go, out into the world, where they come back and work here, or they go out into the world, they are a product of us, and we need to do our part. You're already paying the money, so it doesn't hurt anymore. Just please, do the right thing and vote yes on Measure X. Thank you very much. I'm not done. Now, if I was wearing a hat, I would switch it, but I'm not. So now I want to talk to you about the, the American Legion Auxiliary and our program, our grave marker program that I've talked about several times. We have all the grave markers, they have arrived, they're in, I know I told you that last time. But what I didn't tell you is that they're going to be installed, these permanent grave markers, and we're so grateful to the Los Banos firefighters, CAL FIRE, RIGS, and our Los Banos police officers for installing five hundred and fifty-one permanent grave markers in our cemetery. Now, this will be done by the weekend, so if you have a loved one, a veteran, that's out there in the cemetery, please go look and be certain that there's a grave marker at their gravesite. If there isn't, then call the cemetery and let them know. We'll be installing, um, several groups of us, uh, C Pacheco High Interact, Los Banos Interact, and Century Twenty-One, we'll be putting out the flags just, uh, next week, just before the Memorial Day. It's not a celebration, this is ceremony. So please, um, do thank our firefighters, Los Banos, CAL, RIGS, and our police officers for installing the permanent grave markers. It is quite a task. The markers, the, the pole on them, they're seventeen and a half inches, um, aluminum. The ground is very hard in old Los Banos, so they're getting these two-foot rods, and they're going to drill them down into the ground, pull them out, put the new things in, and then install the grave marker on there. It will make our flag placement program so easy that a five-year-old can do it. We will be expanding the flag program to include Flag Day, Independence Day, and Veterans Day. If you're interested, it's so easy. If you're interested in participating, you can, um, look on the Facebook for the American Legion Auxiliary Unit One Six Six in Los Banos, you can contact, contact me. We're good for Memorial Day, but if you'd like to do any of those others for flag placements, then, um, let us know, we'll sign you up ahead of time. But for now, the most important thing, anyone you know that has a veteran buried in our cemetery, go out this weekend, by Monday at the latest, and make certain that there's a grave marker, so we can honor them as they so justly deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle with the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, just doing a, uh, chamber event update. Uh, we're getting ready for our Dad's Night Out, June sixteenth. It's going to run from six PM to ten. Uh, we're going to have vendors, car shows, our beer booth, and it'll be great, so come out. And then we're also getting ready for our farmer's market. It's going to be held every Saturday from seven AM to eleven PM, from June twenty-third to August eleventh. Um, and, um, applications for both of those, both of those events, um, are in the office downtown. Thank you.
Where's it going to be held this year, the farmer's market?
We are kind of going back and forth on that. I sent an email to the city manager, and I'm waiting on his reply to get that information.
Okay.
Not to put you on the spot. It's Saturday, from seven AM to eleven.
He will get you an answer.
Yes, he will. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Kathy Ballard, resident of Los Banos. I am just requesting to speak at item number ten. It doesn't show that there's a public forum, so I'm requesting to speak at that time, if at all possible.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pastor Bruce Rivers, Mr. Mayor, city manager, and council members. If by now you haven't seen it, there's a new show in town called Los Banos Today, and we do a morning show, which I am the host of every morning, and I volunteer, and we invite everybody under the sound of my voice to come in and sit with us, tell business people what, what business you do, how you do it, we're inviting the chief, the mayor, and all of you. It's not a gotcha show, we just want you to come and tell us what you're doing and what your vision is for the city. We're having great success. Our third month, we had over six hundred thousand hits. We've got a lot of people that used to live here in this community, come into it every morning. We're supporting many, many things, and may I speak briefly to the Boys and Girls Club, uh, since I had a son that was gunned down in front of my home in ninety-three, because we didn't have those kind of things. And, uh, so I, I know as a pastor in the community, some of the things we must have, uh, so I'm not going to speak to the individuals that don't believe it should be done, it just should be done. We need to have everything we can have for our children, because the world has gone crazy. And I can say that emphatically, from a preacher's standpoint, from a father's standpoint, and from a grandfather's standpoint. I have four grandchildren in this community, and I want them to be, have everything. I've interviewed the people at the Boys and Girls Club on my show, uh, our new superintendent, a proud superintendent, and all of that, and I, so I'm just standing in favor, so that voice is loud enough, big enough, and strong enough to say, yes, bring the Boys and Girls Club here. Yes, because there's many, many, many people that have been helped by it, boys and girls, and we just thank you for offering this to us from the Merced County Boys and Girls Club. And like I say, come to the show, every morning at seven o'clock to nine, I'm a volunteer, y'all. Every morning from seven to nine, we're on the air, and we just want to talk about the good stuff in the LB. I didn't wear my cowboy hat tonight, I just left it off, but, uh, that's why you see me, about the Big Valley in Cali, and that's where we are. I'm proud of this city, I came here in two thousand and two. I've had opportunity to leave and go every other place I wanted to go, but for some reason, and I'll say it like this, God didn't let me leave this place, so I'm here doing my part, and I thank God for all the volunteering, I thank God for all of you to have a relationship with. If I don't have a relationship with you, it's your fault, because I know I come to see everybody. And so we're just here with our arms straight stretched wide, thanking you for what you do, so let's go on and do something good for our town and quit tripping off the money.
Thank you, Pastor. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Can I get a yes to the amen on that? Rhonda Lo, Los Banos. Uh, I'm here tonight, uh, in front of you as, as a business coach with Valley Sierra, SBDC, and we have been happily working with the City of, of Los Banos and partnering with you for several months now, and it's working really, really well. Most of you know SBDC is, is really a, a partnership where we're encouraging and growing business in Los Banos. We have two events this coming month. Uh, normally we have a monthly workshop, which we're going to have, and that's a small business startup workshop, and that's where, um, I, I have, I, I spend time with people that are considering opening a business in Los Banos, and I show them kind of the steps along the way, and then if they want to, uh, go further with us, then we can do that. Uh, that'll be on June sixth, and that's at the community center in the lounge. Uh, we're averaging four to eight people each month, uh, and there, most of them are starting to move forward on a business, some of them are farther along than others. The really exciting thing I wanted to tell you about tonight, though, is we are going to bring a procurement seminar to Los Banos, and it's going to be amazing for our Los Banos and, and people anywhere on the west side that want to learn how to do business with the government. And that's anywhere from the federal to the state to the county and the city government. And we're going to have representatives from those different agencies that are going to be there at this workshop, and people can come and talk to them and get the information, because there's money to be made for our businesses if they can just learn how to do it, and it's not always easy. They, they don't make it easy necessarily to do business with them, but we're going to show them step by step how they can do that. And we've got some businesses here that have already expressed interest in it, so we're hoping to have a really good turnout for that. So that's going to be June twenty-seventh, and that's ten AM to one PM, again, at the community center. I'm excited to tell you, I'm currently working with fourteen clients that are here in Los Banos, that are in different stages of getting their business started, ranging from, um, mobile businesses to home-based businesses, to, um, internet businesses and brick-and-mortar businesses. And what it shows is there's people that have a dream, that want to be in business, and you know how important that is to the economic development of our community. If we don't have business growth, it's going to be hard to grow in any other way. And Stacy's been wonderful to work with, uh, whenever we have questions from any of, any of my clients, all I have to do is shoot her an email and, and she gets back to me. And I think that, that represents what a great partnership, because if we do good with our clients, the city does good with businesses, and so I thank you for that, and just encourage you, and I wanted you to know, so if you have people in your districts or in your, um, I guess it's districts you're in now, huh? That, uh, if they ask about it, that this service is available to them at no charge. It's funded through the SBA, so it costs them nothing. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, uh, manager, staff. Everybody inspired me to talk some more, thank you. I have several things to talk about, um, and I have five minutes per topic?
No.
Is that correct? Okay, I'll talk fast. The Downtown Association, um, we did the revitalization workshop, and we're going forward with that. We appreciate the city's, uh, support with all the ventures, and we really want community input on ways to make our downtown, um, better. It's wonderful now, but we always want to make things better. We're, uh, we're having a fundraiser to help pay for a lot of these projects this Friday night, a wine and art stroll, which starts at, Jane, what time does that start? Six, seven? Seven o'clock, seven o'clock. Uh, we do have designated driver tickets. Habitat for Humanity, we're going to have, uh, some artwork in front of, uh, Joanne's bookstore and Health Time. We have a lot of, uh, art treasures that we have left over from, um, the Restor that are actually really collectibles, because we get from estate sales and stuff, so I'm hoping everybody, uh, comes out and makes a nice donation to the cause. Rhonda Lo and I, we are working on getting Love, Los Banos going, we're shooting for June twenty-third, that's pending. We're going to be cleaning up different blocks in the community in conjunction with the police department, um, having a barbecue and just doing all sorts of wonderful things. Um, we're partnering with Habitat for Humanity, because we do Brush with Kindness, um, projects where we, again, we want to make our, uh, community the best that we can, and a lot of people just need a little, um, assistance, but everybody would be invited to that, and we'll get some more information out. Thank you all for your support, I appreciate it.
Thank you. You still have three minutes left, Sandy. That doesn't mean you get eight minutes next time, okay? Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public forum? Not seen or here? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 210-426 through 210-700, in the amount of $392,659.92. Third quarter investment report for fiscal year 2017-2018. Minutes for the April 18th, 2018 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5952, awarding contract for legal advertising to the Los Banos Enterprise for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute agreement. City Council Resolution Number 5953, award the bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the Ice Street Demolition and Abatement Project to Bowen Engineering and Environmental in the amount of $117,400. City Council Resolution Number 5954, authorizing award of construction contract to Floyd Johnston Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $349,240, with a 20% contingency in the amount of $70,000 for the Sixth Street K Stormline Project. City Council Resolution Number 5955, amending the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget by increasing appropriations in the general fund for engineering revenue in the amount of $115,000, and expenditures in the amount of $23,648. City Council Resolution Number 5956, amending the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget by increasing revenues and expenditures in the retiree health fund in the amount of $649,343. City Council Resolution Number 5957, authorizing the city manager to execute a Measure V recipient funding agreement with Merced County Association of Governments for the administration of the local projects funding from Measure V. City Council Resolution Number 5958, approving the annual local transportation fund claim to be filed with the Merced County Association of Governments for fiscal year 2018-2019 in the amount of $150,078. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? If not, do I have a motion? Okay. Mrs. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as stated by title.
Mrs. Lewis? Oh, let me see, did that go on? No, it goes on, go ahead. Thank you. Motioned by Veronica Santos Johnson, and second by Deborah Lewis, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to item eight. Boys and Girls Club presentation by Chuckareca and Boys and Girls Club Steering Committee Member. Is it gonna be in present PowerPoint? Okay. Working? All right.
My name is Chuckareca. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council members for giving us the opportunity to speak here tonight. I am a community volunteer representative for the Los Banos Boys and Girls Club. I'm here tonight because of answered prayers through Jesus Christ by the grace of God, and I believe God has been working through his children to help a great organization get to our town that will help give kids in our community a path to being successful in their lives and, and their chosen fields. I'm here to ask for the support of our city council and the community for what I am excited and honored to be a part of, and that is for the Boys and Girls Club Summer Program right here in Los Banos, and for the ultimate goal of a viable club for our town. We're also here to help make the city council and community aware of the benefits of the club offers, offers to our residents, and most importantly, to help our kids in our community. Become aware of a great club that will have access to help them succeed academically, make healthy life choices, and gain leadership skills in a safe and positive environment. The summer program being rolled out on June 4th, 2018, at the Los Banos Community Center would not have happened or continue to grow if it was not for the efforts of volunteer residents such as Michael Johnson, Geneva Brett, and BK Lockett, also because of the efforts of city leaders like former Parks and Recreation Operations Manager, Paul Cardoza, Public Works Director, Engineer Mark Fachin, Parks and Rec City Manager Alex Tizaris, our mayor Mike Valalta, Foreman Mike O'Brien, and Recreation Coordinator Two, Rob Baker. Also, Los Banos Parks and Recreation Division April Brewer, Los Banos Police Chief Gary Breezy, the staff members of the Boys and Girls Club of Merced and Stanislaus County that worked very hard on the logistics of it all, including Vice President of Support Services Paul Millsap, Chief Professional Officer Lincoln Ellis, and interim club director for Merced County Boys and Girls Club, Michael Pirick. And last but definitely not least, the generous, the generous people of Sutter Health. We have prepared our, a PowerPoint presentation to present to the city council to show the need and positive impact of the club. Also with me are resident volunteers, and would like to say why they support the Boys and Girls Club for Los Banos. Also joining us from the Boys and Girls Club, Paul Millsap and Michael Pirick, to answer any questions you may have about the business or operations side of the club. And we ask any questions, maybe wait until the, after the conclusion of the presentation. Boys and Girls Club of America, for more than a century, Boys and Girls Club has helped young people on the path to great futures. It's time for the Boys and Girls Club of Los Banos, California, to have those same opportunities at personal, professional, and community greatness. Here is a video to show you what happens at a Boys and Girls Club. What is the purpose of the Boys and Girls Club, you may ask? Mission to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. The vision of the Boys and Girls Club is to provide a world-class experience that ensures success is within reach of every young person who enters our doors, with all members on track to graduate from high school with a plan for the future, demonstrating good character and citizenship, and living a healthy lifestyle. Now, here are some faces you may recognize. These are all alumni of the, of the Boys and Girls Club, and these are Hall of Fame abductees. And it's just a small example of faces you may know. So you may ask, what kind of impact does a Boys and Girls Club have on kids? Well, it creates a lifelong impact. There are 16 million alumni around the world. There are 1 in 19 living Americans as a club alum. 54% of alumni say the club really saved their life. The Boys and Girls Club also offers innovative programs, empowering youth to excel in school, become, become good citizens, lead healthy, productive lives. These include sports, recreation, education, the arts, health and wellness, career development, and character, and leadership. May I ask, how does a club make a difference? Young people that attend a club regularly tend to do better than their peers nationally. Here are a few stats that show how much the difference that the club can make. 12th graders volunteer at least once a month, so kids that go to the club regularly, 68%, compared to 39% nationally that don't. Another stat here, 12th graders express interest in a STEM career club, 50, 56% to 25% nationally. And also, one that stands out here the most to me, 97% of club teens expect to graduate from high school. Uh, here is, here are some troubling stats that I found regarding kids right here in Los Banos. Unfortunately, 48% of the families here in Los Banos live below the poverty level. That means that almost half the children in our community may be going without a meal at home. And why does the, why does this show that a need for, for a club? Well, this is something that I've learned about the Boys and Girls Club, is that they also offer meals to help feed kids. The summer program offers a breakfast and a lunch. Here is another troubling stat I found for kids right here in Los Banos, and this is from, according to stats from the police department, which Gary helped me get there, and the Los Banos Unified School District, is that 26% of students aged 14 to 18 enrolled in the district were arrested for crimes in 2016. So that means that 1 in 4 kids you see out in our community are being arrested for crimes. How does a club make a difference in kids' lives, you may ask? Well, 97, 97% of club teens expect to graduate from high school. 88% expect to complete some kind of post-secondary education. 74% of club youth volunteer in their community at least once a year. And 90% of members who attend a club regularly say they can stand up for what is right, even, even though their friends may disagree. The Boys and Girls Club of America is a proven performer. Every dollar invested in the Boys and Girls Club returns $9.60 in future, current and future earnings and cost savings to their communities. This also includes other performance, proven performances like fewer delinquent behaviors, disengagement from gang association, behavior in peers, increased level of integrity, and decreased levels of aggression. You may ask, what does the summer program offer? The summer session offers summer meal programs. It provides two meals for kids, a breakfast and a, and a lunch. And this also, the, offers the summer field trip program, which, which covers everything from art, science, food, to healthy eating habits. Also includes a monitoring, mentoring program. Kids can see firsthand a successful resident in their chosen field, and give kids an opportunity to see if they want to pursue a similar path. So this is where need meets, need meets the opportunity. So statistics speak for themselves. Almost half the children in our community may be going without a meal at home. A fourth of the teens in our computer, in our community are going down the wrong path. Most of the residents, including me, are commuters, and we have a lot of kids that are home during those critical hours of 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM that have no positive influence around. And who, who do they have to look up to but their friends coming over with a bag of weed and a case of beer? There is a need for a Boys and Girls Club in Los Banos. In 2009, a group of local volunteers began to work to bring a Boys and Girls Club to Los Banos. At the time, with time and circumstances, that prevented it from coming to fruition then. In 2015, it was placed on my heart, and I connected with some of the previous steering committee members. I met with club and city officials, and they embraced the idea with open arms and a kind heart. And the fruit of that seed has produced the Boys and Girls Club Summer Program, with an ultimate goal of a viable club for Los Banos. This is truly a great day for the Boys and Girls of the city and the community of Los Banos. Here are some other Hall of Famers. You may recognize some of these names. You have Abel Mabel Thomas, community leader and politician. Bill Russell, professional basketball player and civil rights activist. You also have Denzel Washington, actor. You have General Wesley Clark, retired Army General. Jackie Joyner-Kersee, an Olympic gold medalist. You have some other ones here, like Edward James Olmos, actor. And Michael Jordan, everybody knows who he is. Cool in the Gang, professional music group. Shaquille O'Neal. And we also have two that are here tonight that are success stories with the Boys and Girls Club, that work with the Boys and Girls Club. There's staff at the Boys and Girls Club. We have Michael Pirick here, who's the Merced County Boys and Girls Club Director. And we have Paul Millsap, who's Vice President of Support Services for Stanislaus Boys and Girls Club. So as you see, there's more to the Boys and Girls Club of America than the famous. Sure, you, you recognize many of the names you just saw or heard, but there are millions of alumni you've never heard of. Millions who quietly live very productive lives. Millions who give back to the Boys and Girls Club. Millions who give back to their communities, to America, and to the world. Here are some of the careers and the diversity of careers that the Boys and Girls Club Hall of Fame alumni have chosen to, to taken. And that's activist, Army officer, doctor, entrepreneur, entrepreneur, Director of Peace Corps, and also Emergency Management Director, just to name a few there. We also have Air Force veteran, professional basketball player. We have Marine Corps veteran, Navy pilot, lawyer, musician, medical oncologist. Now, the next slide is a short video showing us what kids are up against in our community, and how the Boys and Girls Club can literally save kids' lives.
It really wasn't safe for any child to really leave home.
And a lot of kids can get in a lot of trouble.
When I was around three years old, my father left me as a child.
It's one of the most poverty-streaking areas in the state.
Drug dealers right around the corner, right next to our home.
Gang violence and teen pregnancy.
I felt like I was helpless, very helpless.
I watched my mom almost commit suicide in front of my whole entire family.
I've actually lost one of my friends due to gang violence.
There was a lot of abuse towards my mom.
All of my friends that I grew up in elementary and middle school have been pregnant.
My brother, who is my greatest role model, well, he used to be my greatest role model. He got into doing drugs, he let his grades slip, and he dropped out of high school.
We had to move out of, of our home. We've been displaced two times this year.
Well, one trial that I've had in during life was losing six close friends. And four of them were from suicide, and the other two were from car accidents. Just was unrealistic. And... You know, because we're, we're so young, so we're invincible, and it just didn't seem like that was possible.
My aunt had a baby, and one day she brought her boyfriend over. He needed a place to sober up, and he laid into the bed where the baby was sleeping, and he rolled over, suffocated the baby. And I'm only about 10 years old, and I kinda felt like it was my fault that I could've done more for her, and that if she wouldn't have died, that us going into CPS custody, that wouldn't have happened. So I kinda blamed myself for all of that happening.
I just felt like giving up and, um, didn't feel like anything was, there was anything to live for anymore.
I was standing in front of a brick wall. I wasn't going anywhere. And the Boys and Girls Club is the reason why I'm on my way to college now and I feel like I'm a success now.
They were the guides, you know, of the tour of your life.
The club is what it says it is. It's a positive place for kids.
A place for me to get away from everything at home and feel like I had people who I could trust.
That's really amazing that one place in our community could make such a big difference in others' lives and in my own.
Without the club, they would have never identified that I was dyslexic. They would have not, never helped me through high school and I wouldn't have got through my freshman year.
It's a pillar of great things and opportunity and hope.
Without the club, my life would have missed, like, the last piece of the puzzle.
The Boys and Girls Club is the guidance for me. They're my life coaches.
Thanks to the Boys and Girls Club, I now have a future.
The club has given me my life.
Be independent.
Be motivated.
Be kind.
Be determined.
Be respectful.
Be real.
Be talented.
Be loyal.
Be strong.
Be yourself.
Be loving.
Be educated.
Be admirable.
Be honest.
Be courageous.
Be happy.
Be me.
Be great.
As you can see by the stats in the videos, the level of impact and positive difference that Boys and Girls Club can make, uh, for our kids in our community. So the only question that kind, came to our mind to ask is who's next? We tend to think of the famous, the most successful among us have something extra or they're gifted. Reveering the careers of some of these alumni Hall of Famers, you can't help but look at a Los Banas boy or girl and wonder, who's next? This concludes our presentation. Uh, thank you for listening. And again, if the council or, or the community has any questions for Paul or Mike or me, please feel free to ask and, uh, thank you and God bless.
Okay, Council, this is an informational item, but, uh, at this time, do you have any questions for, uh, the presenter? Oh. Yes, they, they will, but if you'd like to do it now. Yes, Mrs. Santos.
Uh, my question was just towards the, the age limit of the, of the club. What are the age limits?
Uh, well, let's see, the youngest, I think, is five years old and the oldest is, uh, eighteen. Is that correct? Yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Chuck. Just to bring some clarification to this council, um, at the, uh, public forum that was made mention about USDA, um, having funds that would be available to assist with the program. Is the program that's going to be happening here in Los Banas this summer going to be accessing those funds for the Boys and Girls Club?
Not that I'm aware of as far as USDA funding. I know the Boys and Girls Club has their own, uh, way of funding for the meals that are provided for the children. And maybe Paul could probably get more information on that.
Hi, I'm Paul Millsap, Vice President of Boys and Girls Club of Northern Central Valley. And to answer your question, I think that Chuck made a comment, we feed, um, four times throughout the summer, breakfast, lunch, and a dinner and a snack. Um, we are, our organization does, uh, the national organization does have a, a meal program that they provide. Um, and, uh, for, uh, any additional meals or anything like that, we would, uh, work with the, uh, school district on what they're already, um, getting, but we wouldn't be seeking anything additional outside of what we currently have, um, and maybe what the school district is for the kids of the community.
So part of the funding, um, under this presentation, I understand, is for, um, let's see, where is it here? For, uh, all services provided under the agreement. Uh, would that be, a portion of that be for meals as well? Or is it just for staff services?
It, it would be actually to offset the cost to send kids to the camp.
Okay.
Um, so it's just a small, you, you know, the, the amount that's, uh, being requested is a small portion of the, the cost to run the camp.
Okay.
And so that's what that would be. Uh, it has nothing to do with the, uh...
So the meals will be coming through the Merced program?
Yes.
For Los Banas?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Just to point of a ca, clarification, is it the girl, the Boys and Girls Club of Merced County or is it the Boys and Girls Club of Merced?
It's the Boys and Girls Club, uh, it's the Boys and Girls Club of Merced, uh, County. There were some technical things that, uh, when they, when they, uh, did their articles and it changed and they put Merced. However, um, the, the Boys and Girls Club of, uh, uh, from Lo, uh, Lodi down to through Los Banos are now becoming one entity to serve more kids, to become the Boys and Girls Club of Northern Central Valley and keeping all the same names as DBA. Uh, but, uh, it's the Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Central Valley that will be, uh, at some point, the Boys and Girls Club. But the Boys and Girls Club of Merced County, um, was the original name.
So, so is it...
On the legal document, it's...
Are they one in the same then? Uh, so, uh, because it, it crosses over in the presentation and in, in the staff report. Some places it calls it Merced and some places it says it's Merced County. So that's one in the same.
Right.
Thank you.
Lewis, do you have another question?
No, I didn't.
Is there any cost to the children for the program?
There is. Um, and so the, the program is, uh, seventy-five dollars a week. And, uh, for those who, who can afford to go, that's part of the twelve thousand five hundred dollars to offset that cost. We don't turn any kids away. So if they can't afford to, to, and their families can't afford to come to the club, we do still have, uh, uh, them come as members of the club. So we don't turn kids away.
Thank you.
Also, any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Again, that was for informational act, uh, no action required. And let's go on to item nine, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number Five Nine Five Nine, authorizing the City Manager to execute a facility use agreement and summer program services agreement and the Public Works Director slash City Engineer to administer said agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Merced to provide a summer program for youth and adopt a revised budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen as it pertains to expenditures for the community center technical service amount in the amount of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And, uh, we are going to go to, uh, Director Fajian.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Yeah, tonight's recommendation is that you, um, adopt and approve, adopt Resolution Number Fifty Nine Fifty Nine, which will, uh, approve entering into a facility use agreement and a summer program services agreement at Boys and Girls Club and authorize the City Manager to execute, execute that agreement and the, uh, Public Works Director of the City to administer that agreement. Also, part of that resolution is, uh, to amend the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget, uh, by an increase of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, into, into the community center technical services account number, uh, one hundred four eight one dash one hundred dash two three eight. Uh, the background of this is, I think, way back in two thousand and nine, we, um, were discussing, we had visits from Boys and Girls Club of Merced at the time to use our building. It, it went a little, got a little frick, uh, little friction, but didn't go very far. And I believe another, three years later, we had another visit and it, that one didn't go as far either. But over the last two years, uh, with some of the local people, uh, providing the support and the push, we've gotten to this point where we're, I think we might be able to process a summer program with the Boys and Girls Club of Merced, which is the official name by records. Uh, our city attorney checked that. When it changes name as, as it is, it would automatically go into this agreement without it being transferred to that name. So what we have in this agreement, uh, the program would run, the fit, actual physical program would run from June fourth to August third, two thousand and eighteen. The city would, would permit non-exclusive use. In other words, we have city things going on and we have some programs going on right now at the community center and we'll work with Boys and Girls Club to coexist on those items. Uh, and we'll, and one of the things we have to do for the agreement is cooperate Boys and Girls Club in implementing the summer program. And the city would have to pay twelve thousand five hundred dollars to Boys and Girls Club for services in the agreement. Now, why we split this up, it, the, the billing for half of this will be this fiscal year in June. So we had to amend this year's budget and that's what this resolution asked for. The other half, the sixty-two fifty, is already programmed in the budget which, which you will be reviewing. So part of the review of that budget would be having this in that community services line item and it's already programmed there. It's just a matter of us approving it during the budget session. So, uh, and that's, it does make sense because, uh, half of the programs in June, which is this fiscal year and half of it will be in July. So the services will be rendered half in each fiscal year. The Boys and Girls Club by this agreement has to provide the summer camp program from that June fourth to August third. It has to emphasize academics assess, healthy lifestyles, good character, leadership, sports, and recreation. And I believe, if I can take the liberty, it's going to emphasize, uh, not having that summer loss of education problem that we have a lot when people are in the summer and don't have, uh, uh, they're not exposed to academics or academic type of things. And this is to keep their, their learning skills not only at the level that they left school at, but even increase them. So there's quite a bit of academic mentoring and assistance in this program. The, the other thing that they will, is we will have to have a, uh, submit a final report on the success of the summer program on August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, approximately. While this is going on and seeing how it works, uh, there is, there is desire to continue this from the Boys and Girls Club to a yearly program. And, uh, by their policy, a yearly program would have to actually be per year, but it's, you sign up for a three-year term. That is not an automatic extension of this agreement at all. That would have to come to addendum to this, to this council and you'd have to approve it with the cost implications of a yearly program outlined for you at that time. And we just don't have those at, at this time to present to you. One of the, the cost imp, implications of this agreement is, as I said, there is a twelve thousand five hundred dollar charge to the city of Los Banas. One half would be out of this fiscal year based on your amendment if you approve it tonight. One half would be out, out of next fiscal year, so. The other thing, it is true, the city of Los Banas will not be charging the Boys and Girls Club of Merced for the use of the community center during the duration of this agreement. So that's part of, part of our, uh, let's say, share or part of our agreement and that is spelled out in the agreement. So if there's any questions, I, I sort of went over the nuts and bolts of it and the presentation before presented to you what they, what Boys and Girls Club is about and what they will propose to do in town. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to help answer, as Paul would be also about the operations of the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions at this time? Mrs. Lewis.
Mr. Mayor, um, Mark, the twelve thousand five hundred, uh, I just want to be clear in my mind, since we're paying it in two fiscal budgets, is all for this year, for two months. Or are you dividing it for this year and next year?
I'm dividing it into two years. So in a way, we're sort of jumping the gun on the eighteen nineteen budget. We're, by doing this agreement, you're committing to that sixty-two fifty in that community center line budget item for eighteen nineteen, which is...
So we're actually committing for two years of service?
We're committing for over two years, a total of twelve thousand five hundred.
Okay.
Sixty-two fifty each fiscal year.
Okay.
One billing in June and one billing in July.
Okay. Thank you.
So the new budget's going to have another sixty-two fifty?
Yes, it will.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Freya?
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm pleased to see this coming. Regarding the community center, excuse me, when we, long time ago, seems like forever ago now, uh, when I first took office, the community center was high on everyone's priority list. It was high on mine to get it built. And then the project, when it came back, the costs were so exorbitant, that's why I opposed it at the time. Twelve and a half million, I thought, was too much to spend on it, but the council moved and built it and it was built. And my, the reason I supported that community center for being built was just this reason, was to have a, a youth center and a senior center in the same place, but with, um, separate rooms. The multiple rooms are something I fought for, uh, for this kind of a program because I had seen the program in Merced. And I was so greatly impressed with how that ran and I was so greatly impressed. I also have, I've been in contact with one of my alumna, uh, graduated from my choir about, oh, almost twenty-five years ago, and she works the Boys and Girls Club up in, uh, the North Coast, Annabelle Costa. And, um, I've been in contact with her about the operation of the Boys and Girls Club and I'm confident that you do what you say you do. Summer is extremely, an interesting thing, you know? If I, when I ask my students in school, why do we have summer vacation? They all look at me, "Cause, it's because school's so stressful?" No. It's so you can go home and help mom and dad bring in the crops on your farm. And they look at me sideways. Said, "That's why the school year was designed the way it was, because we were an agrarian economy." So, the purpose of summer was so that the kids could go home and help the parents on the farm, which I used to, being on a, on a farm in a ranch. We used to look forward to the school year starting and the work would, workload would decrease. But, uh, so the summer, summer is a time, uh, a time for a lot of children when it's just dead for them. And these activities, I think, are very good. We also have a high poverty number in Los Banas. I'm pleased to see that the North, uh, Central Valley that's being unified because this entire region, the entire two oh nine, is being used as a housing project for the Bay Area. And housing projects have children. And we have a massive number of children in this town. Twenty-five percent of this town are, are children. It's, it's a, it's a very, very high percentage and it's rising. And you've got to serve those children. And I think this is a great opportunity to serve those children. Um, and I'm looking forward to serving those children. I do respect Mr. Wilson, uh, very, very much. He's, uh, one of the most respected people in my life. Um, his program with his DARE program was exemplary and served children at a very high level. And I am always very appreciative of that. And, uh, I just want to make note of that because I do support the Boys and Girls Club. I do support using the community center because that was, in my mind, its primary function, at least ha, over ha, at least half of it, was its primary purpose when we moved forward in the first place, to build it. Uh, so I'm pleased to support this and I'll let anyone else, let everybody else talk now because I don't think it's a big expense when looking at the, excuse me, when looking at the, at the, at the returns.
Thank you. Mr. Silver.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, this is a question for the program administrator, if he could answer a question for me? So, and I don't know if you don't have the, the staff report in front of you, but, so I, I look, I'm looking at the math on the, you know, the seventy-five dollars per child per week and it shows, you know, what the, the revenues would be for that. Um, then the daily projected staffing costs, okay, that makes, I mean, I can follow the numbers. The one number I can't follow is your feed costs. So your feed costs, if it says per day, per child, forty days times twenty-five kids, and if you're following on that same bar graph, K through second, it's one point five. And then it goes third through fourth is two point five. And then, um, what's it, fifth, sixth is three point five, seventh, eighth is four point five. And then the total is five point five. I, I just, I don't, I don't understand the math on that.
Yeah, I have to see what you...
I'll let you see this. So is that, is that dollars? One and a half dollars? One and a half meals? Let me go back to, I think we kicked out of the wrong one here. Hold on a second. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
So this is per day, per child, um, and it, it's just showing, yeah, wha, 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 what it would cost for that child to have that.
But it, so I get, if you follow your, your, your columns, right? Your total column says fifty-five hundred.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't have any age group in there.
There's no, that's because we feed all of our kids. There's no, wha, what do you mean by age group? All the... All the, there's no age group when it comes to how many kids we, there's no division, there's no cost there.
So I still don't, I still don't, I don't grasp how you how you came up with those numbers. Like, those numbers, I can't figure out how you added them up and came up with them.
So it's showing you per day, per child cost?
A per day, per child?
1.5, 2.5, 3.5, and then 40 days times 25 children?
I get the, I understand, like, the math at the end, but it, but, but those just look like numbers that were thrown, they don't make sense to me. I don't, so I, if you follow your columns across, this is the total, right? You showed me 25, 25, 25. The total for 100 is 60,000. If I come down to feed costs, I go 1.5, 2.5, 3.5, 4.5, that doesn't add to 5.5. If I take the dollar amounts below it, 1,500, 2,500, 35, 4,500, that does not add up to 5,500. That adds up to more. So I don't, I'm not getting where that last column is coming from.
That's interesting. Again, I'm, I think that you're looking at the top number, and with the, the, the bottom line number kind of goes, if you feed 1.5 kids a day, 40 days a week, times, or 1.5, 40 days a week, times 25 kids, is giving you at that $1.50 rate, or, you know.
So is, so is that the dollar amount there? So that, that's $1.50. That's just not 1.5. That, that equates to $1.50. So what you're saying is if it costs you $5.50 per day, per child to feed them, then that equals the 5,500. So do we not, do you not know what it costs per day? Or is that, is that just kind of like a range that it's-
No, no, I mean, we, of course, we know, and, and the budget is a lot bigger than this. There's a, there's a, the way we break it down is the cost per child per day. And so that's what you see with the per day, per child cost. And then it, I guess what you're, the, what you're seeing when it goes all the way across, it's showing that not a range. I'd have to go back and honestly look at my other, the full budget.
Like I said, I was just trying to, I mean, don't, don't get me wrong. I think what the program, you know, and, and what we have to offer, I, you know, the numbers of like saying that we're giving up $168,000 worth of rentals. Well, if you're in any kind of rental business, you don't rent every room every day all the time. So I think that that's kind of a little bit skewed of a number. But I also think, you know, as, as a council, you know, right now, being out there talking to people quite a bit, is something that this community wants. It's something that I hear about quite often. So I, I think that it's a step in the right direction. But obviously, I would have to see, I would, I'd be definitely looking forward to the return, the return that shows us what, you know, what did we achieve? What, what, what kind of benchmarks did we hit? Because, you know, how many kids a week are we expecting? And is this a summer-long program, or do you just come to the camp for one week?
No, so we budgeted for a hu, a minimum of 100 kids. And again, the expectation is that we'll get a lot more.
Okay.
And we, and most kids go for the duration of the summer program. So we don't, it's not a one-time, they show up and then that's it. Usually they come, they, they're there usually all day due to working parents and things like that. That's why we open at 7:00, and we close so late, at, you know, 6:00, 6:30. But it, so it's, it's, it's throughout the day that they're there. And, you know, they're not on campus all day, but they are in our program all day.
Got you. Well, if I could just get clarification on what those numbers are right there, like, what exactly they mean? Because it's, it's, you know, we're voting on an agreement, and you guys have submitted this as part of your budget on how it works. And I can't in good conscience vote on something like if we don't understand what the numbers are. Like, I, I need to be able to, like, understand. I mean, everything else makes sense to me, but that that number there, it doesn't total up to something. It just doesn't show me what exactly I'm voting on. And I, I wish I would have caught it sooner. I just, when I glanced at this the other day, I just assumed that that was a total category, and it, and then, but when looking up, looking at my, I, like, again, I understand how the math works on it, but it doesn't tell me what the math is for.
Again, and I'll go, I'll get you the, some better information, but it's the per day, per child cost at that.
Mark, go ahead.
Thank you. I think if you look at that, it's per day, per child, with their four different times of, there's three meals in their snack. It's $5.50 per student. And you have to look at that column by itself, because that's, that is the column that adds up. And so there, we're saying that 40 days times 25 kids, and it's even assuming less kids that are going to be there. So it's 5.5 times the 40 times the 25, and that equals 5,500. That is the important thing, because with the amount of meals that they're adding. Excuse me, is it right? So it's, because if you got 100, I'm, you take the 100 kids times, and that's where you get the 5,500. They're estimating that 100 kids to feed them is going to be $5,500. That's the way I read that. That's the only way I read that, I don't know.
So then was, so then I guess my question would be, why put the 1.5 and put the 2.5?
I was, when I was looking, I was, I was really looking. I don't know why. But in the, when you look at the total for the 100, which is what they're estimating would be their, hopefully their lowest amount, 100 to 135, that's what would multiply out at the time. And we're even looking at the shortfall is $12,868, and we're just looking at 12,500. And that's for the 100 kids. If you go 100, over 100 kids, there'll be more shortfall. That will not be responsibility of the city to make up. And the other thing about rental, councilman, most of our rentals are in the grand room and the lounge, and those rentals will continue.
Okay.
That was my question.
The biggest impact that we have, besides having a lot of young people in there, is the kitchen is used all day long. That's the biggest impact we have. But we still are working with Boys and Girls Club to work around programs that we already have in there.
And that would include the senior programs?
There's, there's, yes, the seniors who have the senior program will. The one program that is going to be hit, there is a senior lunch program that will have to find another location. They've been given notice. We've offered another location. They don't seem to like it. That's probably, that's about the only location we have to offer them. It's a lunch program at noon, serves about seven people at the max. We've tried to find another location for them. We will take them and show them that location. I believe it's Friday, and hopefully they'll go for that, at least on an interim basis, till they find another facility.
How many people?
Five to seven people is what I understand.
For the lunch program?
For this particular lunch program, yes.
Okay.
But, but that's still, it's five to seven important people, don't get me wrong. And so we're trying to, we're trying to locate that in another facility. We did have one other, it was a sewing class that a lot of seniors went to, but it was separate from the senior program. And, and they're really happy to relocate to Miller Lux, or the person giving the classes. And if we happen to have the lunch program go to that location, it'll almost be a nice intermix, and maybe we'll get more than seven, because people will be doing sewing at the time, we're hoping. But that's, we're working on that program. We're working on trying to get that relocated, and we're doing the best we can on that, but-
But there's an impact, but you're not cutting out anything?
If we, if we can't-
I mean, you have to relocate someone, a relocation is, as opposed to-
If the relocation is agreeable to the person that runs the program, we have, we're not cutting anybody out.
Okay, all right.
We can't find anything, that will be cut out.
Thank you. Thank you. Silveira, do you have any more questions?
No, I'm just still trying to figure out these numbers.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. Well, one of my questions was toward the rentals, so thank you for answering that. And Scott, thank you for bringing up how many kids were to be expected. That was a very good question. That was also part of my answer. But one answer, if you don't mind, the open courts is still, like, you said no programs would be cut, cut. So the open courts that it's, what I understand is fairly used during summertime. That is still going to be used?
Gym will try to keep as much open time as possible. Currently, they're not being charged for that either. So, but we'll, we'll work with Boys and Girls Club and have some, it may limit it a little bit, because they do need the gym to run their facility, but we will work with them and, and work to have everybody in there for an adequate time period.
Okay.
That's the best I can do at this time, but they're definitely working together. This is a, this is kind of a new adventure for us, too, and we'll try to make it work with as many contented residents as we can.
And so we worked with Mr. Baker on there. They put their schedule together. And we put our programs in around the schedule that they, they have, have. Again, the Boys and Girls Club program, the summer program, is not only stationed at the, the community center. They're out in the community or out on field trips and things like that. So we, whenever there is an open time, that there's no program currently going on that's already been scheduled, is when we were able to schedule Boys and Girls Club programs using the gym or art room or some other areas.
Wonderful. Well, I just want to thank you very much for your answers. I'm just happy to see the program as well. For me, growing up and being a poor child of a family of six, I'm sorry, children, six children in the family, my two parents, family of eight, organized sports, and, and I know we, at one time, were in a shelter for a little while, and they had programs, they offered programs there, which could have definitely turned our lives in a different way if we didn't have those programs available to us. So I want to say I'm extremely happy to see this program here, so thank you.
Okay, Mr. Freya, do you have another question?
Yeah, well, there's a question on this budget page that Mr. Silveira was addressing. Was, this was generated by, is this budget page was generated by the Boys and Girls Club or by us? Boys and Girls Club. So this, judging the way large organizations plan funding and finance, especially in a situation where you never know exactly, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing that these are estimates based on, on numbers, on, on large sample numbers over the years and the various activities estimates. That's what I would, that's I'm thinking on, on that. Unlike a business where you, it's in and it's out, and I've got this inventory and that inventory. It's, it's, it's not that precise, and it's not that, it's an estimate. And I think, what I'm looking at is I'm thinking this was generated by Boys and Girls Club as a, as an estimate tool, estimating tool based on statistical information? Would that be a pretty safe?
What we did is we looked at the number of kids we're going to serve, and we, the budget plan was planned based on the number of kids minimally that we plan to serve. And, and again, more than likely, we'll have quite a bit more. But this is just a, and plan or estimate on what we minimally plan to serve.
As we say in education, it's a guesstimate.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Is, if no one else, is there anyone else that has any comment?
You know, I have to echo what Mr. Freya said, because we both had the same feeling at the time the community center was built. And the promise was it was going to be an after-school program in conjunction with the school district. Well, that never materialized until if the council votes for it tonight. And, and now, if the council approves it, we will have an after-school program. And it makes me feel a lot better about the community center after all these years, that, that now it's, it's intended use will be fulfilled. So with that, do I have any more comments? Sure. Mrs. Santos, I had your name again on the queue. Okay? All right, Scott, go ahead.
So, look, I, I just want to make sure that you're budgeting your numbers properly. Because by, by my math, if you take that last column and you say that it's going to cost you $5,500 for, to feed 100 kids for 40 days, right? That's, that's what you got. When I, when I do that math on that, if I take that $5,500 and I divide that by 100 kids, that makes it, it costs $5,500 per kid to feed them. And if I divide that by 40 days, right? That tells me that you're able to feed these kids for $1.37 and a half a day.
Yeah.
Is, is, is that the number that you're going with? I mean, so if, just for future reference, if you just would have put, it cost me $1.37 and a half per day to feed a kid, times 100 kids, it would have been a lot easier to explain. I mean, I had, I worked it every different way that I could think of to try to come up with, to make sure that number made sense. So if that's what it is, is that it's, it's $5,500 bucks is what it's going to cost us over the course of this eight-week program. So where you're looking at, you're, you're looking at, and you simply divide that, that's $5,500 per kid to feed them over the eight-week program. That's right?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Government's not simple. You've been on the council long enough.
This is not government, Mr. Mayor. This is nonprofit.
Mr. Freya?
If there are no, there are no further comments?
There are.
Okay. All right. I've just, okay, Mr. Freya, I'll come back to you. All right, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I just wanted to make a, a final comment before the vote. I appreciate all the work with Mark, our mayor, and Mr. Areka, and everyone from the Boys and Girls Club in Merced to try to put this program together. Certainly, if all things work out well, it would be really wonderful to see children who are going to be taught, you know, upstand, being upstanding citizens and working towards goals for their future, completing school, and just positive things in their life is worth the money that we're spending. You know, we were asked here just recently to give away $25,000, which we had to bring back and reconsider for another organization. But these are a lot of children. And the other question that I'd like to ask is, if I see, I was reading somewhere in here about scholarships for kids who may be able to pay a portion of it. Is there any way that you can get information out to the community for people who may want to donate to the summer program about your scholarship program to help more children be able to participate? So that's, that's another question I had. But again, I want to thank you for bringing this forward and for everyone who participated to make this happen in Los Banos. It's taken a while, but that's how government works. It, it, nothing happens overnight, you know? This is not a private industry where there's a goal on the ground. It just takes a lot to work through these issues and to make sure that it can come to the community and, and help our youth. And I'm, I'm very thankful for it. So if you can address my last question about the scholarships, I'd appreciate it.
And to answer your question, yes, we have. We, we've, I've been working with Sutter Health, who, who's, is contributing to help offset costs. Foster Farms, we have national organizations like J.C. Penney's Ross and those type who are also contributing. And then, you know, we, as far as the local community, that's where the majority of support usually comes from with the, with the Boys and Girls Club, as they can, they govern the Boys and Girls Club in this area. So we are, we've, that's the idea of putting together a steering committee and an advisory council committee to, to go out and help generate resources to help cover the cost of a Boys and Girls Club, the summer program, and throughout the year. The, the annual membership, so you know, is anywhere between $10 and $20 a year that we service kids. So it's, it's, the cost comes from the community and, and organization. So to answer your question, yes.
Okay, so the, the partnership that Mr. Areka mentioned about Sutter Hospital, was that specifically for Los Banos?
Yes, yes. And monies that come into Los Banos stay in Los Banos.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would ask you just one favor.
Okay.
And we have other organizations that have operated in Los Banos very successfully with students and, and, and kids. And that, and that, you know, we all need to coexist. And, and that, when you have fundraising activities, just, you know, be mindful and, 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 and I think everyone wants to be considerate. And I'm not just speaking to Boys and Girls Club, I'm speaking to all the groups that, when we go out to raise money, that, that we make sure that everyone has their pet fundraiser of how, how they're going to attain funds. And that we all work together and, and coexist, because we all want to do good things for kids.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you come forward, please?
We also have a steering committee that needs to be voted on as far as the officers. They include, you know, citizen volunteers, and we do have plans to, to put together a fundraiser and also to appro- And we do have plans to put together a fundraiser and also to approach donors locally here. And getting together, and what we'd like to do is get, have someone from the city representing the city, of course, and then a private citizen and then as well as someone from Stutter Health and from the staff of the Boys and Girls Club to approach potential donors here in town that could really contribute a lot to the club.
So that's the future. We, I think to answer your question, we understand how big the Boys and Girls Club name is nationally.
Yeah.
And that it's almost impossible for sometimes small agencies to compete. So we collaborate with the community, PAL, churches, city, any, in all. Not to compete for funds, but to serve the youth of the community. So the goal is to serve the youth of the community.
Get Pastor Rivers involved. He'll take care of it for you. Okay, any other questions? All right, let's go back to Mr. Freya for the third time. And hang on, Mr. Freya. All right, go ahead.
I would, I move to consider approval, to adopt City Council Resolution 5959, authorizing city manager to execute a facility use agreement and a summer program services agreement and the public works director, city engineer to administer said agreement with the Boys and Girls Club in Merced to provide a summer program for the youth and adopt revised budget for the fiscal year 2017, 2018, as it pertains to expenditures for the community center technical service account in the amount of $6,250.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Freya, seconded by Lewis to approve City Council Resolution Number 5959 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay. We're gonna take about a five-minute break and we'll be back soon. All right, everyone, let's get started. Say hi, Kay. We're on council time. Yeah, Los Banos time. Okay, let's continue with Item 10, Potential Essential City Services Ballot Measure. Item 10A, City Council Resolution Number 5960, authorizing staff to proceed with the preparation of a ballot measure for the November 2018 election cycle and authorize the city manager to enter into professional services agreement with Lou Edwards Group. And who are we going to? All right, let's go. There we go.
Presentation, actually.
Okay. All right, let me press the three buttons here. One, two, three. I got the three buttons down, though. Here it goes. Yeah, it has a little thing and it comes up on here, shows it, yeah. Yeah, should be on. Are you on? Now you're on.
I'm on. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
So I'll just jump right in. So as the councils are aware, the community of Los Banos and the city organization was impacted rather significantly during the recession. The organization saw service reductions and cutbacks. There were positions eliminated during the recession, not reception. Deferred maintenance on facilities and infrastructure. There were deferred vehicle replacements that are ongoing. Unfunded capital improvements. We were estimating about $11 million worth of general fund capital improvements are currently unfunded. And the city focused on providing core services during the recession. But the economy's improving, right? And revenues are growing, aren't they? But yes, yes, they are. But we at the staff level feel they're not growing at a rate that would fund public safety improvements, fund public safety vehicle replacements, restore or improve services and programs throughout the city organization that are important to the community, that would fund deferred maintenance or fund needed capital improvements. We think additional revenue is needed to do all these things, to fund public safety improvements, fund vehicle replacements, attempt to restore improved programs and services, fund the deferred maintenance that has been ongoing for years, and fund those much-needed capital improvements I referred to. So how much potential new revenue could be generated by a sales tax here in Los Banos? Well, that depends on the rate. But we estimate between $1.2 million to $2.4 million of new revenue annually. That would be locally controlled. It would stay in Los Banos. We would account for it separately. We would recommend citizen oversight and transparency in the spending. And it would be spent according to a city council adopted expenditure plan. If we do get authorization to move forward, we would recommend coming back to you as the council in early July in a workshop format to develop an expenditure plan for any potential revenues that could be raised as a result of a ballot measure. The other portion of this item this evening is authorization to enter into a contract with the Lou Edwards Group. City has successfully worked with the founder of the Lou Edwards Group, Catherine Lou, on the passage of three measures, Measure P, Measure K, and Measure A. Catherine Lou is very familiar- Catherine Lou is very familiar with the city, very familiar with the electorate here, and we would recommend if we do have authorization to enter into that contract with the Lou Edwards Group. Really, the purpose of that contract is to develop a communications and public information program for the city to implement, to provide education to the community about the measure. In terms of a potential schedule that was included in your packet, I won't go through the entire slide here, I would just point out that we would anticipate in July, July, I think 18th is that council meeting, coming back to the city council with the ballot measure for the council to potentially take action to place the measure on the November ballot. We would also bring at that time the proposed expenditure plan for council's adoption as well. In terms of the fiscal impact of moving forward with the recommendation this evening, the contract with the Lou Edwards Group is about, is $46,500. We would need some of the city attorney's legal services and expertise in drafting the measure, and other services of about $10,000. There would be Merced County election fees of about $10,000, some printing and mailing fees, we would recommend doing about four informational mailers to the community, again, to provide information on the measure. Total of the recommendation this evening is $81,500. So we're recommending that the council authorize the staff to move forward with preparation of the ballot measure, and we're also recommending this evening that the council authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Lou Edwards Group to help us formulate that communications and public outreach program in regard to the proposed measure. So, well, the formatting got thrown a little off on that screen, but that's the recommendation for the council's consideration this evening. Staffs available for questions?
Okay. Counsel, with your permission, we had one person who wanted to speak, I'd like that person to come up and address the counsel.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. My name is Kathy, resident here, oh Kathy Ball, resident here in Los Banos. I'm here to talk to you about the sales tax. This would be in addition to previous half a cent sales tax for police and fire, I'm not sure when the sunset is on that one. Oh, see, now I lost my place. Although this one would also include the police and fire, from what I read on it, it's mainly for recreation activities for the city and for the swimming pool that everybody, I guess, wants to replace. And I don't understand that because it's owned by the school, so I don't understand why the city's involved with it. I want to bring to your attention, the average income of Los Banos residents is about $45,000. And as we saw earlier, half of our residents are underneath the poverty level. And out of that $45,000 average income, 45 cents to 55 cents is taxed out of every dollar. And that's meaning your federal, your state, your gas tax, your land, which also includes the bonds for our schools that they now want to extend for another 35 years, because I guess they couldn't accomplish what it was, when it was originally set up. And also the sales tax. Now, for the pool and recreational, we will be taxing every resident in Los Banos. That means your senior citizens on fixed income, your low-income people who, right now, are just squeaking by. For, I don't know, maybe at the most, 1%, 2% that want to use the pool, that would be able to use the pool, that would go to these recreational facilities. You mentioned earlier that we couldn't even get a few children when the Boys and Girls Club was here before. It doesn't seem fair that we're putting that, an additional burden on our senior citizens, on our kids that are just working two jobs to pay for their college. It reduces that any disposable income, and personally, your sales tax will go down because they no longer can afford it. They can't, they don't have disposable income, they don't have, you're going to cut back, you're going to go to other areas, you're going to go to the internet to purchase your merchandise, when you can get it with no sales tax. I was looking at the tourism, because everyone says, well, it's okay, the citizens won't have to pay all of it, we have tourism. It's dropped 7% because of the bad PR that's out there in regards to people coming from overseas. People don't want to come to California because of the way our cities look, not all of our cities, I'm not saying Los Banos, San Francisco has homeless people and gross all over the place, LA is too congested, a lot of the places, I've seen less and less people coming from the Bay Area to go to Yosemite. And that's where I got the figure from, down 7%. So I thank you for listening to me in regards to it. I don't know if you've also noticed that there's also a lot more rental campers that you get driving through our town, the people that they rent it for a week or whatever, because they can't afford to stay in the hotels, they can't afford to go out to dinner. So they're renting these little mobile campers and cooking out of that. You have to put all of this in perspective, and if you budget something, you say, okay, we're going to get 2.4 million, you contract out to have a pool fixed, or have an organization come in to do this. And then your sales aren't there, because people just don't have the money, you have no tourism, you've contracted out for something and now you're in debt, and going, oh crap, how do, I don't have enough money. So you need to look at all of that when you think about doing a sales tax, and paying $81,000 for someone to twist it so that the residents here will vote for it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I would hope that, Kathy, we, I wouldn't support anything that's a twisted measure. But I can tell you that I did a survey personally, the city did a survey, and within two years of each other, the survey said, public safety. The pool was a, and recreation was, was, was a concern, but the citizens of Los Banos want medical services and they want more police protection. And I, I can't fault them for that. The downturn in the economy at some, at that point caused the city council, of which Mr. Freya and I did not support, to reduce public safety services at the time. We're trying to build back up, but as our town grows, we need, we need more. And the ballot language, unless it's changed, or what we talked about at one of our workshops, it basically deals with public safety. And, and no one is going to twist a ballot measure, because I won't support it. It's going to say exactly what it's going to do if this council supports it. No. Okay. Okay, okay, I'm just telling you that everyone has a chance to speak, and there's going to be other opportunities for you to talk also. And okay, let's, council members, any comments? Mr. Santos.
I guess, just for clarification purposes, we are putting forth the money to get the Lou Group to help us get, get this, at least give the residents an option to vote on this during the next, next ballot season, is that correct?
Yes, but I'm going to have Mr., I'm going to have our city manager address that also. Go ahead.
All right, the total fiscal impact would be for a contract with the Lou Edwards Group and the additional expenses of the city attorney and county elections and the mailing. The contract with the Lou Edwards Group would be to help us develop information to present to the community so they can be informed when they choose to vote. We cannot advocate in support of the position using public resources or public funding, we can only provide factual information. So we would just be educating and informing so folks could make an informed decision when they go to vote.
Any other questions from council, comments? Mr. Freya.
If there's no further question or comment, I would move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5960, as read by title.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos.
Second.
Okay, motion by Freya, second by Santos, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5950, as read by title. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None, carried. Thank you. We're going to have a number of workshops on this, and it's not the last word for anyone. Okay, let's go on to item 11, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 5961, rescinding the regional transportation impact fee pursuant to Article 4.1 of the implementation agreement authorizing the Merced County Association of Governance to man, to manager, to manage and administer the regional transportation impact fee program dated August 1, 2005. And we're going to go to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have a lot to add in addition to what's in the staff report, as the councils are aware, on March 7, council took action to adopt the 2016 ARTIF study and the project list. I do have an update regarding the city of Atwater, they took action, I believe it was yesterday, to approve, approve the 2016 project list and rescind ARTIF. So at this point, all of the participating agencies have taken action to approve the 2016 list and rescind slash eliminate ARTIF, so based on that, staff would recommend adoption of the resolution.
And I want to thank council for, for what they've, what they've done in being patient and waiting, because it was very important that we see that that 2016 list was adopted, because if we rescinded the ARTIF, the money could not have been spent by this council, because we didn't have a project on the 2016 list. And we have a project on the 2016 list that is an unnamed project in the name of Pioneer Trail. And, and Pioneer Trail is, or Pioneer, how do we name that? Pioneer Corridor? Pioneer Widening?
Corridor.
Corridor Widening, okay, we'll use all those words. And, and that is going to be significant for the city of Los Banos in his relieving the traffic off 152. And it's my understanding that there are two sets of monies coupled in this, but the ARTIF money is like 640,000, somewhere around there, and that money is going to go towards the design of the Pioneer Widening Corridor. Planning, yeah, planning, okay, planning. So we're going to be doing this in steps, and then we're going to be asking for more money in the 2020 cycle, which will be coming up very soon, of the ARTIF. And, and so, so these things are good, it ends the ARTIF, it ends a long struggle that if we vote for this tonight. So what I'd like to do is, is are there any other comments on this? Anyone wants to make a comment? Okay, if the council would allow me, indulge me one favor, and I'd like to make the motion to, to dissolve this. Thank you. I usually don't do that, but I think that I really want to do it, because it's, it's something that, that, that it kind of is personal with me, and, and I really appreciate if, if this is supported, and if not, I also understand. So I'd like to make the motion for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 5961, as read by title. Do I have a second? Mr. Freya.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been motioned by the mayor, second by Mr. Freya, to approve the language, City Council Resolution Number 5961. Roll call vote, please. Yes. Yes, carried unanimously, thank you so much, council. Okay, let's go on to item 12, appointment of commissioner to the Airport Advisory Commission, one unexpired term expiring December 31, 2019, and after interviews, I would like to bring forth Rula Axibal, Axibal, and did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, and, and she is my, my recommendation, so I'd like to make the motion to, that the city council approve her, and, and Mrs. Santos.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned by the mayor, second by Mrs. Santos, to approve Rula Axibal as our new airport advisory planning commission member. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None, carried. Rula, stand up, say hi. I'm sorry, I apologize. Rula's a former student, too, so. Okay. All right, let's go on to item 13, advisement of public notices, and we have one report, and let's go to economic director, Mrs. Alms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have a conditional use permit for a large family daycare, and we will also, the planning commission will also be considering a statutory exemption from SEQA. This particular conditional use permit is for Lisa Wilson, her large family daycare is This item will be considered by the planning commission on Wednesday, May 23, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, let's go on to item number 14, city manager's report, Mr. Oz.
I've already said too much tonight, Mayor, but thank you to the police officers for being here for recognition of National Police Week, it's great to see them in the chambers this evening. Rhonda Lowe is being modest, she's doing some great work with the SBDC in support of our small businesses and our entrepreneurs, so thank you to Rhonda for what you're doing. Love Los Banos, Bruce took off, so I can't thank him for what he's doing, Chuck Areka, it's, it's really good to see the Boys and Girls Club, at least the summer program, being approved by the council, so thank you very much for that. I think we, I hope we can make some significant impacts on some young folks this summer, so thanks for that support, and I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let's start, let's go on to city council member reports, and tonight, let's start with Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I just want to say again that I'm very ecstatic about the Boys and Girls Club coming. Once again, I, I also, as the video stated, how it's really impacted a lot of people's lives, I think that'll definitely help for here in town, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your vote. Okay, let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to remind the community that on May 27, at 9:00 AM, will be the service at the San Joaquin National Cemetery for our veterans, and then also to remind the community that we also have a service on the 28th, the following day. to remind the community that we also have a service on the 28th, the following day, which is Monday. The first service is a Sunday, I should say, and the 28th is on a Monday at our local cemetery, and I believe that starts at, is it 9:00 or 10:00? Not sure, I think it's 9:00, 9:00 o'clock? Okay. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have to report tonight is, is before we meet again, we will have had our June primary elections, and I just would encourage everybody to make sure they get out there and vote.
Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, let's go on to Mr. Faria.
Thank you, Mayor. Police Department, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for your service. John F. Kennedy started that recognition, asked not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country, and that extends to your community and city and your family. Great to see you all here tonight. Habitat, great chance to honor them and all the good they do, helping people. Sweat equity is a wonderful thing, when people help build things, they cherish them and work very hard to keep them. Boys and Girls Club, it's been a long time, at least 10, 11 years, maybe 12. I've been supporting the Boys and Girls Clubs coming to Los Banos. It's great to see it start with the summer, hopefully that will move forward to become a permanent, year-round establishment. Saw a lot of people at our fair, the fair was a lot of fun. It's a great gathering, a great reunion for Los Banos, and we always enjoy seeing everybody come back. Memorial Day coming up, and you have the services in San Anella and the services here in Los Banos, get a chance to honor the dead. I will tell you, going out to the cemeteries and seeing all the flags is a very moving experience, and the ceremonies are very moving experiences. So if you can get out there, it'd be very good. It's not Memorial Day, we do more than just take the three days off. And just so happens also on that weekend that the DES Fest, the Portuguese, DES stands for the Divin Espiritu Santo, which means Divine Holy Spirit, and those celebrations are in honor of the Holy Spirit. And you can get sorbush, and that's free. You can come in and eat, and it's very delicious, and a lot of fun, meet a lot of people, and get to have a good time. So Los Banos is a great place to be these days, lots of good things going on. Thanks.
Thank you. And what can I say? Everything's been mentioned tonight, Boys and Girls Club, we're so happy that students are gonna have more opportunities when school is out, it's very important to have a place to go to. Habitat, 18 homes in the years that they've been here, and remodels. The city has contributed lots, and when we had the redevelopment, we also paid the fees on those homes, on those new homes. So the city has done, and I thanked Ashley, she made that comment about the city participation. And I think what we all have to remember is, what have they done in the past? What have we done in the past? What are they doing now, and what are they gonna do in the future? And things change, people change, funding changes, but everyone is in full support of affordable housing for individuals that want their own home and would like to put in some sweat equity. The police officers, I don't know what we would do without the police officers, all public safety. They are the lifeblood of this town. They, I'm at a loss for words as to how we would survive without some kind of decency and some kind of unity. The police department is not just an enforcer of our local, state, county, and federal laws. They are there to assist people, and they do it selflessly. All public safety. The wine stroll that's coming up on this Friday, a great event, if you meet a lot of people that you never see in Los Banos, and that you don't run into usually, and it's a good time just to get together and talk. And that's gonna be 7:00 p.m. this Friday, May 18. Memorial Day, always two moving services at the National Cemetery, out by Gustine and San Anella, and then our local. It was very nice to hear about the grave markers, this has been going on for years, and you've expanded that program, Geneva and the veterans, and VFW and American Legion together have expanded that program to where now veterans are, all of them are recognized, and it's truly moving to know the backstories of the individuals who died for this country and in service to our country. So Memorial Day is that day. Memorial Day is a day of reverence for those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Also, we had Mr. Marshall came here tonight, I'm really glad that he did come. It's a worthwhile cause, the education of our children, the public safety, all these things, I know they're expensive. I mean, what can we say? We have to educate our children, and we have to make sure that we maintain order and we have public safety, and we have things for kids to do. So I would urge you to support Mr. Marshall's request, and if you can find it in your heart to do so, please do so. So with that, I am going to, now, we're going to adjourn to closed session. Conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, city manager Terazas, city attorney Vaughn, city clerk, human resources director Maloney, finance director Williams, legal counsel Tufo, employee organizations, Los Banes Police Office Association, LBPOA, Los Banes Police Sergeant Association, LBSA, Los Banes Firefighter Association, LBFFA, Los Banes Police Dispatchers, Community Services Officers Association, LBDCSOA, and unrepresented miscellaneous employees. Item B is employee, public employee release pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. And I'll come back, I'm gonna read the adjourned item now, and then I will read it after we return from closed session, and adjourn to Tuesday, May 29, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. to attend a 2017-2018 year budget workshop being held at the council chambers, 520 J Street, Los Banos, California. Yes, I did. I read that one, too. And so, could I call for a vote on the adjourned meeting to Tuesday right now? You have to wait till after? Okay, all right. All right, so I won't do that. All right. Okay, so we're going to go into closed session now, if there's anything to report, we will come out and report it after closed session. Okay.
And Mr. Faria.
I'll move to adopt Council Resolution 5962 as read by title.
Okay, Mr. Silveira.
Second.
Motion by Faria, second by Silveira for the approval of Resolution Number 5962. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Pardon me? Oh, item 16A, closed session conference with legal negotiators. Direction was no reportable action. Okay? Now let's go on to item 17, adjournment. Adjourned to Tuesday, May 29, 2018 at 5:00 p.m. to attend the 2017-2018 fiscal year budget workshop being held in the City Council chambers at 520 J Street, Los Banos, California. And do I have a motion to adjourn to that?
So moved.
Okay, it's been motioned by Silveira. Mr. Faria?
Second.
Second by Faria to adjourn to May 29, 2018 at 5:00 p.m. here at 520 J Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Meeting adjourned at 10:21.
Amen.